Thank you, sir. Okay. Well, the time is 9:02. We do have a quorum, so we will call this meeting of Commissioners' Court to order. Are there any citizens' comments?
No, sir.
Okay, moving to item one. Consider and take action on minutes from previously held meeting of Commissioners' Court on October the 11th, 2022. Court, are there any additions, deletions, or comments?
I have one. In my motion last week for the right-of-way permit for Encore, there's a number of roads that I listed on there, but on the minutes it says Pitchford Ranch Road, and that is not one of my roads. It was added later, so I'd like to take that road out of the minutes. Pitchford Ranch Road. That's all I had. I just didn't want that to be in the minutes for a future.
Okay. Ms. Wright, you got that?
Got it, thank you.
Okay. Anything further? Entertain a motion on the amended minutes.
Judge Amu, we approve the Commissioners' Court's regular session, October 11th, 2022, as amended.
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner Tulley and second by Commissioner Spivey to approve the amended minutes from the previously held meeting of Commissioners' Court on October the 11th, 2022. All those in favor of the motion? Item passes unanimously by those present. Item number two is consider and take action on burn ban for Henderson County, and if you would, Shane, make sure that microphone's on, would you? There it is. Okay. Thank you.
Good morning, Court. Of course, the Keith Bowery, it kept climbing throughout the week with that rain that we had over the weekend. It was kind of widespread throughout the county, so it knocked down the Keith Bowery 38 points. And I don't have the numbers yet this morning, but I think it's probably going to come down a couple more from yesterday. So as of this, yesterday morning, we were at 578, so we're right at that threshold of putting on a burn ban, but I still think we're in great shape. We didn't really, we had a couple of fires, but we haven't had any fires get out of control. Been real bad, you know, moving real fast like we were before, so I really would kind of like to wait another week and just see what happens at this point, because we're about the same position we was in last week.
Court, comments?
The fuel load, we're pretty well, I mean, okay. Because weren't we about 590 last week?
I think we were right around 583 or something like that, yeah, pretty close, but in the fuel loads, it's about the same. The next fuel load change we're going to see is when we get a freeze. So if we get a freeze, it's going to kill anything that's still live out there and it's going to die down. And hopefully by that point, we're starting to get more rain. If not, then, yeah, we will be in a bigger position, place to burn that home.
I think they're forecasting rain again beginning of next week.
From what I saw this morning, it was supposed to be Monday, Tuesday, somewhere around there. Hopefully, they just keep knocking this back down, because I know that this time of year, people are trying to get some burning done.
Well, is one of the reasons for the caution is that when we institute a burn ban, then that causes for fire departments to respond to every fire? Is that part of the weighing in of the factor here?
Yeah, it does for me. Definitely, every, in every fire that gets lit, they call the fire department, they'll have to put the fire out. You know, we respond. If it's under a burn ban, you know, they can receive a citation, so that's, that's, that's one of the, I guess, factors into the entire equation of it, is the amount of time that the fire department's been chasing down fires. And really, it's, for me, it's almost a guessing game of, you know, how safe are we versus, you know, how dangerous it is, and how much time are we going to spend out there putting out fires that really aren't an issue at all. Also, who, you know, how many people are going to pay attention to the burn ban? And usually, it's the good people who pay attention to the burn ban, the ones causing the problem really aren't. They don't care about the burn ban anyway.
So really, in this instance, recommendation is to not do it, but to continue to request for the public to exercise caution?
Yes, sir. That's what I would like to do, is just extend it for, you know, hold off another week, let's talk about it next week, and then maybe put on our Facebook pages and stuff, hey, we're still talking about it, let's just use caution and watch the winds, especially these bronze mountains.
Court?
I'm good with that.
Okay. All right, then. Thank you, sir. We'll take no action on item two, but we will continue to keep it in the queue for coming courts. Item number three is consider and take action to form a selection committee for the 2021-2022 Texas Community Development Block Grant Fund. Ms. Brown?
Good morning. Today, I'm just coming before y'all to ask that we create a selection committee for the Crescent Heights project through the Community Development Block Grant. We will need a three-member panel. Of those members, I suggest we have the precinct, which would be Commissioner Spivey, and a member from Crescent Heights, which would be the manager, Charlie Luce, and then we would need one more member to make up that three-member panel.
Commissioner, this is in your precinct. For the court's certification, there had been quite a bit of communications back and forth between the county and Grant Works and the development of this project. Their choosing to discontinue the services and exit the contract with us puts us in a position where, so we don't lose any ground, this selection committee will bring on the next grant management team.
Correct.
And go through that process rather quickly. I am very familiar with it, given what we've gone through the last couple of months, and if the court wishes, I'll make up that third member of the selection committee if the court desires.
That would be nice.
But Commissioner, you are in, that's your area, you know more about the, how the project is developing, if you'd like to...
I would be happy to have you on the team.
Can you give us a positioning on where the project is? Because this has been going on now for...
This started when Commissioner Comex was still in office, and I was helping him on that selection crew also, but I'd be more than happy to continue helping. Crescent Heights Water's always done the right thing and kept in touch with me. I'm not sure where they are on their project.
And I can speak to that. With the process at this point, we are basically at a stand seal until we get the administrative documentation to TDA, which is the Texas Department of Agriculture, and that's why they strongly suggest that we move forward with this process as quickly as we can, following the correct guidelines. But there has been no progress because of the situation.
On our backups, is there any reason why Grant Works pulled out?
It was just different, un reconcilable differences, so they decided to pull out and no longer keep the contract.
There's some requests made. Ms. Brown is being very nice in this. There was some requests made that we found very concerning, some processes that we were being asked to do, and during that discussion process of that, I'll be quite honest, tempers flared, and they decided to exit.
I just wanted that on for the record.
You bet. In these particular instances for the public certification, Henderson County is the grant recipient, not Crescent Heights. And when Henderson County is the actual guarantee of this, there needs to be the confidence that it's done exactly correct. And in this particular instance, where we were being asked to recreate some documents, we did not feel that to be very appropriate. So I'll leave it at that point. It was very, very well warranted, and I appreciate Grant Works for exiting before we did. So... Anything further? Entertain a motion.
I'd like to make the motion to form a selection committee for the 2021-22 Texas Community Development Block Grant Fund with myself, Judge McKinney, and Crescent Heights, Charlie, Luce.
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner Spivey, second by Commissioner Tulley, to form the selection committee for the 2021-2022 Texas Community Development Block Grant Fund, members being Commissioner Precinct One, County Judge, and representative from Crescent Heights Water. That way, if there's any changeouts during our terms, because these things tend to go on, that you'll still have that position at the place instead of an individual person. Any further comments? All those in favor of the motion? Item passes unanimously by those present. Thank you, Ms. Brown. Item four is consider and take action to declare certain roads within the Briarwood Bay subdivision as public and except into county road maintenance. The roads that are included are the Forest Hill Drive from Driftwood to Elm Street and Valley View Drive in front of lots 50A and 51A. Commissioner Richardson?
Yes, Court.
Familiar with this? This is in precinct?
Four.
Four, yes, sir.
Yes, Court. Briarwood Bay is a property owner association in precinct four on Lake Palestine. During Commissioner West's term, and Commissioner Gisland, we've accepted roads into county maintenance, and they pay for the material and stuff for the upgrades. And there's about 13 miles road in there, and some of these roads, they pay for just sections of it, and there's still more sections of a road that's within the same name, that's got little dog legs off of them and stuff. And they're wanting to come in and finish one part on Forest Hill Drive, and then there's another part on Valley View Drive that's just a little 172-foot dog leg in front of two lots, and we're wanting to bring these in, and they're going to upgrade the culverts, and county's going to do the maintenance and labor on it. They're going to provide the material cost.
Questions for the Commissioner? This is a part of that cooperative road program that we've instituted for a number of years and as a way for some of these...
Property owner associations.
Yeah, to bring the roads into under county maintenance. Any other questions or comments? Entertain that motion.
I'd like to make a motion to accept public roads, Forest Hill Drive, from Driftwood to Elm, in the county maintenance, and a portion of 172-foot of Valley View Drive.
I'll second the motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Richardson, second by Commissioner Spivey, to declare certain roads in Briarwood Bay subdivision as public, except into county road maintenance, those being Forest Hill Drive and Valley View Drive?
Valley View Drive.
All those in favor of the motion? Item passes unanimously. Number five is consider and take action to accept a $11,377.40 donation from the Briarwood Bay subdivision for road reconstruction. Commissioner?
Yes, Court. They approved through their POA board meeting this week, last week, to accept for the county to come in and upgrade these roads for them, and the cost is the amount of $11,377.40 for asphalt, and I'd like to present that to the court. I have a check here.
Questions for the Commissioner? Entertain a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to accept a check from Briarwood Bay POA for an amount of $11,377.40 for road reconstruction.
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner Richardson, second by Commissioner Tulley, to accept the donation from Briarwood Bay subdivision for road reconstruction in the amount of $11,377.40. All those in favor of the motion? Item passes unanimously by those present. Item number six, receive financial reports, and there are none. Item number seven is consider and take action on payroll distributions and accounts cash sheets. We have none to present today. Item eight is consider and take action on submitted contracts, and there are none of those. But there are item nine, which is consider and take action on request for right-of-way permits. Commissioner Spivey?
Yes, Court. This is a right-of-way agreement, kind of the same place that was last week in Key Ranch area. And they will be upgrading poles and lines, and the location is at Key Ranch and O'Neill Road. And there is a representative for Encore here, Mr. Victor, if anybody has questions for him.
Questions for the Commissioner? Commissioner, did you say Old River Road or...?
That's what it says on the maps, but it's Key Ranch Loop.
It's Key Ranch Road?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
And O'Neill.
And you'll make that change on the...
Yes, sir.
On the application. Questions for the Commissioner? Entertain a motion.
I'd like to make the motion to approve the proposed utility line activity between Encore Electric and Henderson County Precinct One, located in Key Ranch subdivision, with the Commissioner's authorization to sign.
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner Spivey and second by Commissioner Tulley to approve the right-of-way agreement with Encore Electric Delivery Service for new lines in the Key Ranch subdivision, located in Precinct One, with the Commissioner's authorization to sign. All those in favor of the motion? Item passes unanimously. Commissioner Richardson, I believe you're going to speak for Precinct Three on this next one?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Bethel Ash has come forward with a permit to do a road bore under County Road 5307 for a water line within a right-of-way. It's at address 14230, County Road 5307. It's going to be a 100-foot total, private-to-private line, road bore.
Check that. Check that road number.
3507.
I thought you said 5307. Okay. Maybe I had dyslexia.
Here, have some Angie's coffee.
You can check it later on recording and see if I didn't mess up or if it's you.
Any questions for the Commissioner?
All I know is it didn't start with a four.
It did start with a four. Commissioner, thank you very much for helping out. Precinct Three. Any questions? Entertain a motion.
I'd like to make a motion for Bethel Ash Water Company to do a road bore under County Road 3507 for a water line within a right-of-way, private-to-private.
I'll second the motion.
With the Commissioner?
With Commissioner McCam's authorization signed.
Commissioner, motion made by Commissioner Richardson, second by Commissioner Spivey to approve the right-of-way agreement with Bethel Ash Water Supply Corporation for road bore under County Road 3507 with Commissioner McCam's authorization to sign. All those in favor of the motion? Item passes unanimously by those present.
I do have a lot of roads that start with three, though, now.
You do, don't you?
I got five more if you want them.
I have twos.
All right. Item 10, consider and take action on submitted budget amendments, and there are none. Item 11 is consider and take action on payment of bills. Ms. Carpenter?
Yes, sir. We have fiscal year 2022 in the amount of $806,959.56.
Commissioner Spivey, questions?
I have no questions, Judge.
Commissioner Tulley?
I have none.
Commissioner Richardson?
I don't have any, but I think the biggest chunk of this is a lot of the radio, one of the last payments on the radio. We're getting close anyway.
It is. This is a little over, right at $500,000. We still have a little over five left. This is for the equipment and stuff that's actually tied into our grant processes, that we've got the CERI grant.
Yes, it's statewide emergency radio infrastructure.
And this is, it is a reimbursement grant, so first we have to pay for it, and time is getting short. We want to get this taken care of. So, and hopefully by the end of December, we will be completed with the project at this point. Any other questions, comments? Entertain a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the fiscal year 2022 bills in the amount of $856,959.56.
I'll second his motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Richardson, second by Commissioner Spivey to approve the fiscal year 2022 bills in the amount of $856,959.56, as presented. All those in favor of the motion? Item passes unanimously. Ms. Carpenter? There's... $8,582?
Yes.
And it is...
Fiscal year 2023.
Okay. Software maintenance. GovAces Vision, what is that? Oh, Grannis. All right. Court, questions?
Yeah, do we have to pay it three months in advance?
To come out of our fiscal year 2023 budget, you get this for the 23.
Oh, because our contract's from November to November?
Yes, sir.
Any other questions? Entertain a motion.
I'd like to make the motion to approve the 2023 bills of $8,582.30, as presented.
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner Spivey, second by Commissioner Tulley, to approve the 2023 bills in the amount of $8,582.30, as presented. All those in favor of the motion? Item passes unanimously. Thank you, Ms. Carpenter. Item 12 is consider and take action on submitted plaits. Commissioner Spivey?
Yes, Court. This is a new subdivision. In the past, it would not have had to come to court because it's over five acres per lot. And we've been working with this one for a month or so, and everything's, looks pretty good. There's a couple variances, one for the right-of-way width, but it's just a little portion of it at the beginning of the road, and a variance for the road material. They are going to do a nice road of 24-foot of select field clay, eight to 10 inches thick, and six inches of crushed concrete, 22-foot wide, and six inches of crushed asphalt, 22-foot wide, with ditches and culverts. I've already been out there, and it's going really good. It looks really nice. They're trying to do everything the right way. They have a historical letter with no historical significance. They have their will serve with Encore and Crescent Heights Water. And there is a couple lots that have some floodplain on them. Ms. Joy Kimbrough has been out to take a look and has made notes on the final plat for disclosure to when the people buy it. It is written on the plat. And we also got a copy of their restrictions for their subdivision, the covenants. It looks pretty good. They're going to have a POA for that subdivision, and the developers here and the county engineers here, if there's any questions, and the floodplain coordinator.
This is an eight-lot...
Yes, sir.
...subdivision, and it is of large acreage.
Large acreage.
Right. Meaning the roadway, as far as traffic volume, can be expected to be lower than what we would normally associate with a subdivision, correct?
Yes, sir. But there is going to be a really nice road when they're finished.
Oh, agree.
But everything is, looks pretty good, and...
Okay.
They don't usually have to bring one like this to court, except for the new wall of the road.
Well, next week, we get to have our workshop on the revamp of the subdivision regs so that it would be more uniform. I'm looking forward to that. Court, questions on what's been presented? Now, in this, we'll have approval of the plat and the variances. We'll need those in the motion.
Okay.
So... Any other questions or comments? Entertain that motion.
I'd like to make the motion to accept this new subdivision called Crescent Oaks Farms, located in precinct one, with the two variances requested and the disclosures on the plat for filing purposes only.
I'll second the motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Spivey and second by Commissioner Richardson to accept the Crescent Oaks Farms subdivision and the variances for filing purposes only. All those in favor? Item passes unanimously.
Thank you, Court.
See that? You bet. That wasn't too hard, was it?
Uh-uh.
Item 13, open and consider bids.
Good morning, Court. This morning, we have the food services bid for the Justice Center. It was originally awarded in 2019 for 2019 through 2022. I spoke with the sheriff. We would like to ask the court to extend for an additional 12 months. They are currently willing to, five-star, excuse me, five-star is willing to extend for that 12 months and keep the rates at the current rate, not increase at the CPI for at least six months. We'll revisit it six months and see how everything's going, and determine whether or not the increase that is part of the contract that we currently have.
Okay. Court, questions? I assume that CPI is a part of...
The cost index, cost percentage index.
Kind of bit us this time, didn't it, Sheriff?
So they're going to hold it for six months at what we're paying right now?
Yes, we've been, we had five-star in 2017. Maybe 2008 time, they've been doing to us, they did try to grow over the rates, they were going faster in six months. And we're doing right away.
I want to remind the court, this is one of those avenues that statutorily the sheriff doesn't have to really involve us in, and I appreciate the sheriff and his policy of, you know, having unity on a lot of these decisions. What's the pleasure of the court?
So moved. I'll second.
Motion made by Commissioner Tulley, second by Commissioner Richardson to approve the food services bid extension as presented. All those in favor of the motion? Item passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 13, excuse me, we got everything signed?
Yes, sir.
Item 14, consider and take action to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner Tulley, second by Commissioner Spivey to adjourn at 9:31. All those in favor? Item passes unanimously. Thank you very much.